All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence? And please remember those affected by the coronavirus and the families of those who have unfortunately passed away. My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic. Republic, which is standing. One nation. Under God, and God under God. Under God, and God under God. Liberty, justice, law.
Good blessing.
Jean, roll call.
Benelli. President. Paduk.
Here.
Aimo.
Here.
Agnastakis.
President.
Benton.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Kulasek.
Here.
Luhan.
President.
Minuta.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Deganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
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 Vero.
Here.
Russia.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Okay, if there are no objections, agenda items number twenty-five through twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, and numbers thirty-seven through sixty-four will be voted on collectively.
Second that.
I don't know if we need a mo- we need a motion on that, Ms. Second?
There you go. There are no objections.
No objections, Colonel. Okay, if there are no objections, some resolutions will be voted on by voice vote. We've been doing this lately, and some by roll call. Only respond if you are a no vote for an abstention. Okay, public participation will be postponed to a future legislative session, but the public is invited to send their written comments via email to jramppen@orangecountygov.com. That's J.R. Yes, Antoinette, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish.
at orangecountygov.com. And you wanted to mention a couple correspondence.
Hi, yes. Mr. Chairman and members of the legislature, I believe you received two emails that the clerk of the legislature received regarding the resolution for sale of county-owned quarry property or portions thereof. One was from former legislator Jeffrey Berkman from the city of Middletown and Chuck Thomas, the local historian, who was one of the members, individuals who nominated the site to the National Register of Historic Places. Both expressed concern and opposition to the sale of the property and encouraged for preservation of the caves. Both emails will become part of the official record of this legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoinette. Okay, and also, we have communications under A from the county exec on the budget and the capital plan. They'll be received and filed. Okay, number one is a voice vote. Okay, Jean, you want to read it?
Legislators Benelli and Hines, resolution fixing date, time and place of meeting to organize the county legislature in 2021 and to conduct certain county business pursuant to sections one fifty-one and one fifty-two of the county law. That would be on the seventh day of January 2021 at three-thirty with a snow date of January eighth, 2021, at three-thirty.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, Carrie, number two is a roll call vote. Go ahead, Jean.
Legislators Benelli, Aimo, Paduk, Kulasek, resolution authorizing the chairman of the Orange County Legislature to enter into an agreement with Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress and Negotiation Works, Inc., Joshua Weiss, Ph.D., president, for consulting services for its diversity intervention initiative.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, I see Janet's hand in, and, oh, Janet, yours went down? Okay. Minority Leader Paduk?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Janet. Mike Paduk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as one of the key legislators to request to broaden the scope of the diversity intervention initiative, I would hope that as the project moves along with our consultants, that the legislative is updated monthly on its progress. That it's important due to the fact that there may be needed changes to the scope of the project, along with assuring that there is a diversity of people involved in every aspect of this initiative and to ensure the outcomes and pilot programs encompass all our concerns. As the minority leader, I was involved in the interviews and feel that Joshua Weiss, who will be leading the initiative, understands what our concerns are and will be open to any changes or recommendation as the project moves forward. So I'll be supporting this resolution.
Thank you, minority leader. And I would hope that, you know, the three leaders who were integral in this, yourself and Michael Aimo and Katie Benelli, would, you know, update the caucuses during the process. And, you know, if we need to go to the statutory committee for updates, we should certainly do that. And if we need more money to expand the scope of work, we should certainly go to Ways and Means and the Oversight Committee for that as well. Okay, any other further? Kevin, Darian, Luhan, I see your hand up. And then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have often, or several times, mentioned my concerns over this particular resolution. While I believe it was always very well-intentioned, while I believe that it is definitely something that we need in Orange County, my concern was always about the organization itself getting this particular contract and doing this particular work. What would have been really great to see for an organization that's focusing on racism and that's focusing on anti-Semitism is an organization that is respected in the community for that sort of work. Hudson Valley for Progress is well-known for a lot of great things, but it's not well-known for social justice, equity, or racist or anti-racism work. Its Board of Directors is also not, you know, well-known as being very diverse. Again, I understand that this is something that we should definitely be supportive of. We should definitely be praising any step forward in terms of trying to combat and address systemic racism, not only here, but across the country. But my concern has always been that by giving these small, which I regard as a small token of support against racism, we lose the bigger picture about what is really needs to be done. And unfortunately, I just do not feel that this organization has it in its organization to be able to do the work that we need to get done. And again, I, you know, I've said this from the very beginning, I'm concerned also, again, also in terms of how they're going to be doing issue, following their work groups and how they're going to be determining, you know, what issues are important. I know that this year, they're going to be focusing their class on addresses and racism, but my understanding is that class is not made up of people that look like myself or other people that represent communities of color. And so if that is going to be an example of the work groups that they're going to be doing, once again, it is only reinforcing the concerns that people of color have, that when we're talking about people of color, they're not in the room. They're not at the table. And so I unfortunately must say I'm going to be against this resolution and unequivocally against it. Not because I don't think that it's well-intentioned. I understand that many of you, probably all of you, are doing it for the right reasons. You want to take an incremental step towards addressing racism. I think that when we talk to communities of color, incremental steps is just simply way too late. And we need to do, we need to take wider steps to address racism and not as an afterthought, which was the situation with this particular resolution from its start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, majority leader Benelli, then, legislator Sassy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to, and I said this at rules, but I wanted to thank my colleagues, Mr. Aimo and Mr. Paduk, in working in a true bipartisan effort in order to bring this forth. This started actually quite a while ago, and I'm not going to belabor because I think everybody knows the history. But it did start with taking a careful look at the southeast part of Orange County when it had to deal with the Hasidic community. As we were developing this, we recognized that there was quite a bit of unrest throughout the country. And even we had some demonstrations here locally, but fortunately enough, all of that was peaceful. And we were very fortunate about that with that. And we were very fortunate that we had a lot of organizations that were responsible for that. So we have very quickly changed gears and said, well, this should be well-encompassing. And we embraced the idea of expanding what our initiative was as far as addressing diversity throughout the county, whether it be in the Hasidic community, whether it be racism, whether it be with other populations that are throughout Orange County, because we are a diverse county. So I'm very proud of the work that we've put forth. I would like to say that we've even taken the proposal that was a little different. It actually had three partners in it. In an effort, we recognized that one of the partners was kind of redundant, and we really didn't need them. We sent them all back to the drawing board, told them to sharpen our pencils. They came down $20,000. And this is the proposal that you have before you. And one of the things that I think is so attractive for this proposal is this gives us the opportunity to work with an internationally acclaimed individual, Josh Weiss. He is recognized throughout the globe in regard to his expertise in diversity, in negotiations, and even our commissioner of human rights. Well, not commissioner, I always call it that. This is the director of human rights. She was impressed with that. She's very anxious to have the opportunity because she's going to be an integral part of this. And she's very anxious to have the opportunity to work from him. So if we can have one of our own employees being trained by somebody, Mr. Weiss's caliber, then I think this is a great step forward. And I would encourage everybody to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Sassy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Aimo, fellow legislator, for all the time and effort that he put into this. And I know what Michael does, Michael does with all his heart and soul. And it is very well-intentioned, but I do agree with many of the points that legislator Luhan had made as well. I'm just hesitant and will be a no vote on this because of the $100,000 for the study during very uncertain times of the pandemic and the ability to pull all the pieces together. I don't know if all the pieces are there. We're in a tight budget. A lot of people took the buyout, and we haven't filled positions. So I'm really, the timing of it and the cost of it right now, I'm going to be a no vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. It doesn't look like there's any other questions?
Legislator Sierra has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Joel.
Thank you, Chairman. I understand some concerns by legislators Luhan. And even though, you know, we are this legislative body and make laws for the county, but I've always said throughout my political career that we are imperfect people and we are capable of making imperfect laws. But I think this resolution, and I think we're going to be taking a stepping stone, a step in the right direction. I would encourage all of my colleagues. I want to thank all of you for all the hard work you put into this. And like I said, I think it's a step in the right direction, so I'm in favor of it. And it pleased me when you had to say, Chairman, that we can reappropriate funds and change and be fluid with this. So I'm looking forward to that in the future. But I'd like to be a sponsor on this resolution, if you could add us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator O'Donnell?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm just a little concerned with one of the comments that legislator Luhan just made in reference to executive director not being very diverse. I just ask if legislator Luhan, I don't know who he's talking about, who the executive director is, and what makes him think that person is not very diverse? Because if we're going to hire this company and it's something that we don't know about, I'd like to know about it before I voted, so.
Is it talking about Jonathan Dropkin, I would think? I don't know. Or Mr. Weiss?
He was referring to the board as a whole, Mr. Chairman. As one of the comments that I've made oftentimes is, you know, when we talk about diversity, when we talk about inclusion, when we talk about equity, it's so important that we really address things, not just from the bottom up, but from the top down. And oftentimes, what you see, particularly in nonprofits and organizations across the country, is that oftentimes you see organizations that do great work or do work in our communities, but oftentimes the boards are not inclusive of the people who they represent. And so what I said was is that I don't believe that their board of directors, and I have the board of directors in front of me, you know, is not very representative of the community that they sit home and they consider home. I have nothing against, you know, them as an organization, but I do not believe that they necessarily understood racism the way it needs to be understood. And I think that Inadi Esposito, with her years of experience, Director Esposito, with the work that she already does, we could be doing so much more with these funds to amplify the mission that she's already doing and doing with one hand tied behind her back without an assistant and without so many great, you know, resources that we could be giving her. I believe that the commission itself could be doing a lot more work if we gave it more resources. And that is something we actually have chosen not to do, time, year after year. And that is what really concerns me, is that how can we talk about, you know, saying we're going to make these changes, but at the end of the day, the person who's going to have to do the real hard lifting after this study is done is going to be put on to directing herself. I just see that as, I'm glad that she's a part of the conversation. I'm glad that she was part of the interview process. I'm glad that this will be a learning experience. I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning the strength of what this project could really do. I question the concerns about the organization itself. There was another organization that had a majority, a minority community that was at its lead. I think that that was a really important, significant aspect of that group. You know, I don't question Joshua Weiss's credentials. I mean, you know, who is not going to be excited about having someone from Harvard? Absolutely, that's wonderful. That's not my concern. But when we're talking also about issues at race, I'm pretty sure that Dr. Weiss would be very, very, would be the first one to say that he doesn't understand issues around privilege, around racial justice or racial issues because he's never lived it and he's never experienced it. And anyone who wants to say that they understand that and never experienced it is definitely not someone that we should be wanting to hire if they were saying that. So again, I'm not questioning, you know, the, and I'm not saying that anyone here is doing anything wrong. I think that everyone, the work has been there. Mr. Legislative Aimo of.
All right, can you sum it up, Kevin Darian?
From the very beginning.
We've got a link.
Yeah, from the very beginning. Let's.
Does that answer your question?
Writing on this, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
He answered it about three, four minutes ago. I'm glad you cleared it up that you weren't speaking about an individual person because you did state executive director. So I'm glad you cleared that up, that you were talking about the board in general. So thanks for clearing that up.
You're very welcome.
If legislators could please address their comments to the chairman and not to each other pursuant to the rules of order and procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Lori Totell's hand. I only see about fourteen legislators. So Lori Totell's hand is up. Do you want to speak, Lori, still? It was up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate it. I've been listening to everybody's comments here, and I can understand the position that Kevin Darian has as a person of non-white background and looking at a board that is mostly a white background to be able to fully understand the impact racism has on somebody of color or Latino, brown, or black community. So I get that. But I also think that this is an appropriate step forward, and I'd rather us make some step forward at this point rather than no step forward. But I think this is just the first step. And I want us all to realize that this is just the first step. But I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, was there another hand up I thought I saw earlier?
I believe legislators Deganga did, but she took her hand down. I don't see anymore.
All right, let's go right to roll call then. Jean.
Benelli? Yes. Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Agnastakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan?
No.
Minuta? O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra? Deganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Totell? Tui?
Yes.
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 Nineteen ayes, two noes.
Right. All right, three A, receive and file. Number three, Jean, introductory local law number thirteen.
Legislators Kulasek and Menzel, local law introductory number thirteen of 2020, a local law amending local law number five of 2015 as most recently amended and restated on local law number nine of 2018 for the purposes of authorizing electronic filing and electronic signatures and making provision for other ancillary amendments.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Agnastakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Minuta? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Deganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Vero? Russia. Twenty-one ayes.
I'm having deja vu. I remember legislator Hines mentioning this process years ago on Fifteen Matthew Street, and we're finally getting there, I guess. So I think it was the same process, right, Kevin? Okay, number four.
Partially.
Partially.
Legislators Hines and Fagion, resolution allowing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Board of Elections to amend resolution number one ninety-one of 2020 in order to update the Schedule A to conform with county financial systems.
Mr. Chairman, that title should read authorizing, resolution authorizing. It was a typo.
Okay, duly noted. Okay. Who had their hand up, or somebody started to say something? I can't see.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Okay, roll call. Let's see, no voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number five is roll call. Jean?
Legislators O'Donnell and Deganga, resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing the chairman to retain an accounting firm to conduct a fiscal audit of the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, its accelerator programs, and the Orange County Funding Corporation for the period twenty-sixteenth through 2020.
Second, Vero.
Okay, point of order. I thought this was supposed to be authorizing the chairman or designate.
Mr. Chairman, if you read, there's a footnote on the resolution which addresses whether, in the event the chairman is unavailable or abstains or has conflict. So.
Okay.
That's pursuant to our administrative code.
Okay, minority leader Paduk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have another point of order. How can a resolution asking for a forensic audit of the IDA, its accelerator programs, and the Orange County Funding Corporation, which passed the Statutory Rules Committee meeting, be amended before it reaches the floor of this legislature? I was asked to attend a special leadership meeting with the IDA, its vice chairman, Ed Diana, and its subcontractor, Vinnie Casalino, regarding that approved resolution. On the spur of a moment meeting, there was a full presentation by its members, and they made a presentation and went over a variety of topics handled by the IDA, its accelerator programs, as well as the Orange County Funding Corporation. The presentation was very informative. And at that meeting, I was under the impression that there would be an additional presentation to the full legislature before any actions were taken. Directly after that meeting, the Republican leadership had a caucus meeting to discuss the agenda for today's meeting. On Wednesday at 12:11 p.m., I received an email that read, "As requested, Legislative Council revised the attached resolution to remove the word forensic from the resolution as to the type of fiscal audit being requested and address the issue should the chairman abstain from the vote." As a member of the Rules Committee, I was not informed or consulted with by anyone regarding a change to an approved resolution. Any changes or amendments to any resolution must be approved on the floor of the legislature. Apparently, the Republican Majority Caucus discussed this issue at their caucus and decided to make changes to the approved Rules Committee resolution and asked Legislative Council to change it. That's not how government works. There should have been a request for a special meeting of the Rules Committee and the changes taken up at that time. This is unacceptable. It should be referred back to committee before the new resolution is addressed. This is not the resolution voted on and approved by the Rules Committee. And maybe Legislative Council can expand on that because I don't know how this is happening.
Point of order, Chairman Russia?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I'm going to turn this over to Katie very shortly if the conversation continues to go on.
Just for, for factual clarity, this resolution was never brought to Rules Committee. This resolution was presented in E and E. Thank you, Chairman.
It was listed as rules in E and E, Mr. Chairman.
On this resolution, it's only listed as E and E. Mike?
I'm looking at the previous one, obviously.
Okay. I wasn't really involved with that process. But I'm just going to say a couple of things, and then I'm going to turn it over to Katie because I do sit on the IDA. If this proceeds forward, I think it's best that I abstain. But I do want to say that the Orange County IDA is in the process of going through an audit right now. We do two audits every year. They will be completed by March thirty-first, and those audits are, one of them is done by JGS, an independent certified audit, which is sent right to the State Controller's Office and the ABO directly. And there's also a Paris reporting audit that's sent to those two agencies as well. So the IDA, we had a meeting at two o'clock. We're agreeable to turning that over to the legislature as soon as it's completed on October and March thirty-first. And also, Chairman Ryskevich, I believe, will have the IDA accelerator on the E and E agenda for January to fully discuss any questions and give an overview, like we had at the leadership meeting, to fully discuss any questions and give an overview, like we had at the leadership meeting, Mike Paduk, on Monday, an overview of the accelerator, which we had back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, when we had one accelerator, and we're poised to have six accelerators very soon with Highland Full Hope in the works as we speak. So, I'm not gonna say any, because I am gonna abstain, so I'm gonna let Katie handle it from here. And how the forensic term came out of there, I think Katie is knowledgeable in that. But, and then Aunt Ingrid can answer questions, so I'm gonna turn back and shut my mouth. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may just address that. When this went before E and E, I questioned the use of the word forensic, and then when you look at, you know, the terminology of a forensic audit, it connotates that there is criminality, that you're looking to see if there was any criminal behavior. And I don't think that was the intent of the legislature to look for criminal behavior. Here, I think they were looking to review the projects and the use of the monies and whether or not, you know, that comes a time when certain programs should have been, or accelerators should have been moved along, and whether or not the IDA had used those monies for the intent, for their intended uses. So, I thought from the get-go that the use of the word forensic was misplaced in this resolution. And then the majority leader had asked me to remove it at the recommendation of her caucus. I do agree with Mr. Paduk that perhaps the best way to amend this resolution, the appropriate way, would be to do it on the floor of this body. And so, if we could take, you know, if someone wants to make a motion to remove the word forensic from the title and from the resolution, that would be appropriate.
Antoinette is one of the sponsors. This is Staganga. Should I make that motion to amend it?
Yes, you can.
That it's correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to amend it to take the forensic out and to leave it as a fiscal audit.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, Majority Leader Benelli, I would ask that you take Agenda Item Number Five for, as of now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And at this, at this point, we have an amendment to the original resolution that came out of E and E, and we have a motion and a second. So, at this point, Jean, if you could do roll call on the amendment.
Benelli?
And the amendment, does everybody understand it? Do we need further clarification? We're just taking the word forensic out.
The word forensic from the totality of the resolution, including the title.
Okay. All right, everybody. Yes, Mr. Anagastakis, if it's on the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to thank Antoinette for, Ms. Reed, our attorney, for clarifying this. And I want to take a moment to state, I think we all know that she will be retiring. I think it will be a big loss to the legislature, because she knows the procedures that this body operates on. And I'm a little shocked that this resolution got this far. Mr. Paduk is a hundred percent correct in what he stated. You know, we have to make sure we're doing things legally. And I understand that the word has to be changed, but it just can't be changed the way it did. It had to come to the floor, so I'm glad that our attorney pointed that out. And I would hope when someone takes her place, they will have the knowledge that she has to make sure that our procedures are followed correctly all the time. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, we have quite a few hands up, I believe.
Thank you.
Katie.
Okay, Katie, we have the legislator Luhan, Tottel.
Are these, but these hands were previously, is this not even?
They were, yes.
So, could you take your hands down and just raise them again if it's on the amendment? And that would make Jean's life a little easier. Okay, do we have any hands now?
Yes, we have legislators Luhan, Coolisack, and Sierra.
Okay, Mr. Luhan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. So, I have a few questions, because I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused. You know, when we, like, like, like the council said, when we, when we talk about forensic, it, there's that connotation that there is illegal activity. And that, that is obviously in and of itself is very concerning. So, if there are legislators here that believe that there is illegal activity that's going on, and they have evidence or anything to suggest why that is, I think that it's very important for us to be having that conversation before we even discuss things like forensic. I also question, you know, my understanding, how much is it that we're going to be dedicating to this, this, this audit? And how different really is it from the audits that they are going to, that they are already experiencing, and that the audits that they have gone in previous years? Because I'm really curious now, if it's not a forensic audit, and, because, so I want to know what we're voting on here. If it's not a forensic audit, what exactly are we gonna be looking, seeing from this particular audit? And also, could we not have gotten this information from them directly? I mean, there's a lot of information that they have on their website and so on. I'm sure that they would have been happy to sit down with us and send it and give us whatever we need. So, if there's concerns, I'm curious why we didn't do that first. My second thing is, and, you know, I, I have mixed feelings about the ASO, you know, but I will say this. Since, since the start of COVID, what I've seen across the county is, is a great fusion of funds to, to startup businesses here in Orange County, everything.
Mr. Luhan? Mr. Luhan, I'm good. Mr. Luhan, I would respectfully ask you to stick to the idea of the amendment, which has, which is removing the word forensic, and then we can talk about the resolution as it stands.
That's fine.
So, please stay on top.
I'll continue my comment. I'll continue my comment in the next section. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, those are my questions.
Okay, fine. Well, just, please put your hand down now, and you can raise it again. All right, I think Mr. Coolisack or Mr. Sierra were next. I'm not too sure of who.
I have. This is Jim Coolisack, and I just, if somebody has their mic going on, and there's a lot of background noise, either turn the TV off, do something, but there's a lot of noise in the background, so if you're not speaking, please mute.
Thank you, Mr. Coolisack. Is that it?
Yes, that's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sierra?
Yes, my, my understanding, this all comes to be from a, one of our colleagues questioning where the funds were going for the IDA. And my, my, my thing is, is if we remove forensic, if we remove the word forensic from this, this resolution, which blows my mind that it was even changed from a statutory committee to now on the agenda, I'm not sure how that happened, but, you know, we can answer that another time. But if we remove the word forensic, then why are we not just taking the same audit that they do twice a year and submit to the state? If, if that's the case, then, then let's not take any action and take their word for the audit that they, they're already doing. So, for those of you that don't know, a forensic audit is, is more in depth, more in detail. It's a totally different audit. It is a different cost. But if we're not gonna take any action on a forensic stance, then we should take no action, is my feeling. And, and the fact that one of us had a question, the, the process and where the funds are of, of this organization, which handles and directs tens of thousands, if not tens of millions of dollars, federal funds. You know, in my opinion, I'm in favor of the forensic audit. And if we're removing the word forensic, which the statutory committee voted on, then this body shouldn't take any action. It's naive of us to even think that we should remove that word. And once we, once we vote on this, I'd like to get a, a response or a answer on how the resolution was changed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sierra, thank you very much. And before I move on, I'd like to take the opportunity to speak to this. Antoinette, our legislative council is absolutely right. The Republicans had a caucus meeting. There was some concern, obviously, from the word forensic, because it does connotate, and it does definitely mean some type of wrongdoing or possibly a crime. And that was not the intent of what we were looking for. We wanted a set of independent eyes that would take a look at the in-depth operations of not only the IDA, but the Funding Corp. And the accelerator. Those were some of the issues. Yes, Mr. Paduk is absolutely correct in that leadership did meet prior to the Republican caucus meeting. Unfortunately, it ran kind of late with the IDA, and both Chairman Breschah and I had to leave that meeting. So, we could not conclude, conclude it, and it was very difficult, because they really didn't get into. They spent a lot of time giving us a good history about the IDA and the inner workings. But to answer the questions that were brought forth by Legislative O'Donnell, we never really had the opportunity to get into that. And whether Mr. Paduk and Mr. Amo were able to do that, I, I am not sure. So, when we had our caucus, we felt that sending the word forensic sent, sent out the wrong image. We just really want to get to the bottom of this. We want a set of independent eyes to look at this. We're putting this out, and for those, and I'm not too sure, I think it must have been Mr. Luhan that asked how much it is. It's twenty thousand dollars. And as Mr. Sierra seems to know very well, that a forensic audit in no way is going to be twenty thousand dollars. It's going to be a lot more. So, if you're going out there to look, and you say you want a forensic with twenty thousand dollars, no one's gonna come in and do that for that. The idea is to get somebody in there, start looking at it, at which time, then we can decide when we have that set and that independent opinion, whether we need to go further. And if we do, then that's something that's our responsibility to move forward with. And I did call Mr. Paduk this morning in order to brief him on what my caucus had to say and, and moving forward with this. I did not have an opportunity to do that yesterday, just prior to. Our office is very, very efficient, and they got it out before I could actually make the phone call. So, if, if, it is definitely on me that I didn't get a chance to call Mr. Paduk ahead of time, but I did call him the first thing this morning, and unfortunately, we didn't connect today. So, that kind of gives you the history as far as that's concerned. And I believe I have Mr. O'Donnell, Lori, and then Mr. Paduk. Is that correct, Jean?
You are correct.
Okay. Mr. O'Donnell? Well, is he there? Jimmy, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Thank you.
And I don't even see.
Thank you, leader.
Okay.
So, the key word from our leader is independent, all right? So, for all my colleagues, to me, forensic or fiscal is not gonna make one iota of a difference. We can argue that forensic has some criminal element to it. We're not looking at anything criminal, all right? So, if you want to get rid of that, that's fine, all right? Fiscal audit is gonna be different than the audits the state comes down. The state doesn't look at, hey, where did the money go, all right? We want to know how come it went from fourteen million dollars in the bank down to six million dollars. So, if you keep at this rate, within three or four years, we'll be down to zero, okay? So, when the accelerator was started, it was for office space, right? To provide cheap rent, and then point all those businesses in the right direction to get business plans. Not for us to pay for the business plans, not for us to supply financial power to them. They were on their own. We gave them cheap rent, a nice building, a common area, a gorgeous conference room with the best technology at the time. So, what this audit, fiscal audit, okay, so I'd appreciate that. Get rid of the forensic. Kathy made that. I seconded it. And just call it a fiscal audit, which will be much more pinpointed. It will tell us whether we're getting a return on our investment. Where is the money going, all right? Where is the money being spent, and why are we doing it this way, all right? But the key word is independent, and this is for all of us, as legislators, responsible for the well-being of all our citizens and their finances. Is this money being spent properly, and how did it go from fourteen to six? And are we on our way to zero, okay? So, this will tell us that, all right? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. I believe I have legislator Tottel next.
Thank you, Majority Leader Benelli. First, for a little bit of information, a forensic audit is the examination and evaluation of a firm.
Laurie, excuse me. Laurie, excuse me for the moment. Could you all please make sure you're muted if you have other things going on, because we're hearing, I can't hear her. Thank you for taking care of that. Laurie, I'm sorry. Laurie, Laurie, now you're muted.
Okay, so a forensic, got me now? Okay, so a forensic audit is an examination and evaluation of a firm or individual's financial records to derive evidence that can be used in court of law or legal proceedings. A forensic examination is designed to focus on reconstructing past financial transactions for a specific purpose, such as concerns of fraud, whereas an internal audit is typically focused more on compliance and/or the performance of the organization. So, therein is the difference between the two. And I understand that, yes, we need to know where the money is going. However, at this point in time, before we ask for a forensic audit, which is also something that the New York State Comptroller's Office can perform, I think that I would like to make a motion, whether somebody wants a second or not, that we table this resolution, because I believe that point of order, it should go before rules, as other resolutions have been pushed away and pushed aside, because they didn't pass through the appropriate committees. And prior to that, that we should do an investigation by getting a copy of the financial audits that have already been performed in the last year or two, and see what the independent auditors have come forth. Before, in a cash-strapped world that we're in right now, we spend another twenty thousand dollars of taxpayers' monies chasing after something. So, I'm gonna make a motion at this point that the resolution.
Laurie, we have a motion on the floor already, and that motion is to remove the word forensic. So, if that's something that you would like to do, you're gonna have to wait until we do this.
Well, actually, motion to table, we take our motions in a reverse chronological order, so.
Okay, but she wasn't tabling this. She was putting on another motion.
She wants, she wants to table it. Motion is to table.
I want to table. I want to table.
Well, I can't have a lot of people speaking. Laurie, go ahead.
Because we need to decide whether we need a forensic, whether we need a forensic audit or not. And I don't think we can clearly make that decision today with the information or the lack of information that we have at this point. And I also believe by point of order, that it should go before the Rules Committee, not come out of E and E.
Okay, so we take a roll call now on the motion to table. We got it, Laurie. Okay, let's move on.
Do we have a second on the table?
Luhan is the second.
I didn't hear him. I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Jean, could you do roll call on the table, please?
Yes.
Benelli? No. Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagastakis?
Abstained.
Benton?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Hines?
No.
Coolisack?
No.
Luhan?
Just a point of understanding.
Yes, yes or no? Yes or no?
Yes is for tabling?
Yes, it's for table.
Yes.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell? O'Donnell?
He's muted.
Jimmy, you're muted.
No.
Ruskovich?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Staganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tottel? Laurie?
Yes.
Tui?
No.
Vero? Vero? Breschah?
Abstained.
Right. Okay. So, that's five eyes, fourteen noes, two abstentions.
Motion fails. Now, back to the original motion to remove the word forensic.
Okay. Do I have any?
Staganga and Sierra, for discussion.
Okay. Paduk? Sierra?
Staganga and Sierra.
Okay, Mr. Paduk.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Just, I just want to clear up. I had a discussion with Mr. O'Donnell, because he was the one that put forth the resolution that was passed in committee and sent, apparently sent to the legislature, the Republican caucus making a request to change it. I had an issue with that. I've explained fully why. As Antoinette Reed, as our attorney, said, you know, you made amendments on the floor. I'm okay with that, after talking with Mr. O'Donnell. I think if, after this fiscal audit by an independent agency turns up something that we need to look further into, then we can go back to it. I think it's important that, that we get something done. I mean, we made, we suggested that we check into it, so I'm all for checking into it from an outside auditor and getting the questions Mr. O'Donnell has answered. He wasn't fortunate enough to be in the meeting where we could have asked some of those questions. Like I said, I was under the impression it was gonna be a presentation to the full legislature. If you still want to do that, I'd be open to doing that, too. However, I, I'm gonna support the change. I just want you to read the resolution into the minutes, with the amended resolution into the minutes before we vote on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Sierra?
Thank you. Chairman Breschah, in his opening statement, stated that the IDA has two independent audits a year. Is that correct, Chairman?
Yes.
You did say that.
Well, one is, one is, it's an internal audit done by an independent agency.
So, you already have an independent audit, is what you're saying, by the independent body? So, is it redundant for us to call for another independent audit? So is it redundant for us to call for another independent audit? I mean, how many independent audits do we need if you guys are doing two a year? If we're not doing a forensic, then why are we taking any action? I'm not saying that there's any wrongdoing. I know there was, there was some speculation, I hear some background, but there's some speculation about some contracting work. I heard some unofficial comments made, and that's why we were even taking this action in the first place. If this is, if this information has changed, then why aren't we just basing this off of the independent audit that the IDA is already performing? Is my question. Can anyone answer that?
Mr. Sierra, I will attempt to answer it, but maybe Mr. O'Donnell would like to address it as well. But as you very well know, when an agency is being audited, they just do a pre-functuary and they look at certain things. We're actually going to ask them to look at specifics, not just come in and do a regular fiscal audit. We, we, Mr. O'Donnell had identified some specific things that needs to be looked at, which they don't usually do in an audit such as that.
Got it.
And at this point-
Okay, so it's-
I, I, I see that Mr. O'Donnell's hand is raised, so I'm just going to, if he wanted to add to that. Mr. O'Donnell, you're muted. Mr. O'Donnell, you are muted.
That's three strikes. You can throw me out if I do that again, three times I've started talking, so.
Try to get the batter up there, he's not there.
Right, right, so those audits are all online for the entire public to see, but they don't answer specific questions. We have specific questions of concern that we want answered. And it's in all of our best interest that an independent auditing company does that. Okay, there's specific questions we need answered. And letting an independent company do that, it's not a lot of money. I don't think they're going to go over that, but hey, it's well worth the money and investment to find out why we went from fourteen million to six million and to look at every check that's written, rather than an auditing company goes in and just does a sampling. All right, so that's basically it. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, so.
Okay, I'm going to move on with Mr., I believe, Staganga, legislator Staganga. Is your hand still up?
Thank you. I think that Jimmy just answered that question. The audits that are being handled right now are internal. They basically just look for the checks and balances. They don't deal with specific requests and things that we're looking for, just to get the answers to some of the questions. So I think everybody's pretty much covered that, and that was the reason we're not looking for the criminality on this. We're looking to get the answers to specific questions concerning where the money is, how it was spent, and who's benefiting from it. And for open government, our whole thing is accountability, so I believe this is why I co-sponsored with legislator O'Donnell, is that we need to feel secure in how they're spending the money and know, because none of us want to be left out there that we've supported something without knowing exactly what's actually going on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Majority Leader, I just want to say that they are, it's internal, but it's also very thorough, and it's the Paris reporting especially that goes to the ABO. So it's very thorough, but I don't think it's as thorough as, as legislator O'Donnell's looking for. I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr., legislator Ruskovich.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, just this whole discussion about forensic versus fiscal, you know, when we had the discussion during E and E, I think Mr. O'Donnell said it best, the intent was to have an independent audit, not one that's, you know, contracted by the IDA or the ABO, but one that's contracted by us. I think keyword is independent, so, you know, I mean, we're having a whole lot of discussion on, you know, terminology. I think it, it is appropriate to remove the term forensic because it does have certain connotations, which I don't think, you know, our intent is to have that connotation. I think we want to just have an independent audit, and I think the, you know, the IDA is going to be cooperative, and I think they'll probably be much more open to working with us without that term forensic. So I think, you know, I think our intent is pretty clear, and we should move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruskovich. And last, I'll take Mr. Menuda.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I think the term we're looking for is special audit. Every organization has a internal audit and external audit every year. In my last experience with the school district, we, every year, had a special focus area that they wanted us to focus upon. So special audit is highly, a highly defined audit that only looks at specific areas of an organization's activity. This type of audit may be initiated by a government agency that could be authorized by any entity or even internal. So I think the question here is, we want to know where the seven million dollars went. Number one, we should ask, if we don't like their answer, then we have a different story to go behind. So I think what we're looking for here is a special audit.
Thank you, Mr. Menuda. I do see that legislator Luhan and Kulusek have their hands raised. You have spoken before. I remind you again, we're speaking on the amendment for the word forensic. Do you have anything new to add, or can we call this vote? Mr. Luhan?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Yeah, no, I'll keep it very focused on this particular topic. I'm glad that the discussion kind of clarified some of the concerns and then, and, but, but it's still, I'm, I still remain puzzled why it is, I mean, a lot of the people that, that go on the IDA are people that we, we put in. Mr. Chairman Brash himself is there. We've all said this is not a criminal matter. This is, this is not something that, that, you know, we're not looking for wrongdoing, and yet we haven't had a conversation where they have just come in and said, hey, listen, this is where the money was spent, and show us exactly how that money is spent in different programs. And as, as a person who has, who has walked through some of the projects they've done, I can see very well where some of this money has been spent in the middle of a pandemic. So I, I just find it really strange that we're having this conversation. So if it's not a criminal matter, if it's, there is really no real wrongdoing that is being posted up, I, I don't see, and I, and I do understand that the need for transparency, and I absolutely agree with it, but, but nothing has really come out in this conversation to indicate that, that we're doing anything more than has already been done. I really would like, prefer to have the conversation with the IDA in front of all of us and to be able to make that-
Mr. Luhan, you're speaking. Mr. Luhan, you're getting off topic, and you're speaking to the resolution. That would be without forensic. Thank you. Mr. Kulusek, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The specific items, the specific items of concern must have been brought up in executive session at that committee meeting between forensic and fiscal and, and what those concerns are. I don't know. I, I watched the, the video, YouTube video of the meeting, but I wasn't online that day at that meeting, so I don't know what conversation was had in executive session. So I'm at a loss here on, on what those items are that are specifically concerned.
Understandable. Okay, so at this point, with no further questions or comments, I'm going to ask Jean to call the roll on the removal of the word forensic in the resolution, item number five. Is that correct? Do you, actually, Antoinette, could you do me, would you mind just reading it?
Yeah, so, so this is agenda item number five. We are amending the resolution to delete the word forensic from the title and from the entire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jean, roll call, please. Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagastakis?
Abstained.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney? Cheney?
Yes.
Fegion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Yes.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
No.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tautel?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Resha?
Abstained.
So that's eighteen ayes, one no, and two abstentions. Motion passes. Okay, and now we need a, a roll call on the amended motion. Is that correct, Antoinette?
That is correct.
All right, Jean, would you mind doing the roll call once again? And here again, just to remind all of you, this is on the amended resolution, number five. Benelli? Okay. Yes. Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagastakis?
Abstained.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fegion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Yes.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Aye.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tautel?
No.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Resha?
Abstained.
That's eighteen ayes, a one no, two abstentions. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you're back on.
I'm back on, and we're on number six.
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is going to be a voice vote. Jean?
Legislators Sassy and Tautel, resolution authorizing the county executive, that has to be changed to, from allowing to authorizing. The county executive, in conjunction with Orange County Community College, to amend resolution number thirty-three of 2015 in order to use the donated funds on a broader spectrum.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Roll call. A voice vote, I'm sorry. You all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, number seven is two-thirds. It's a bonding resolution, two-thirds, roll call.
Legislators-
No, I'm sorry, it's a sale of property, I'm sorry. Not a bond, okay.
Legislators Cheney, Menuda, Tui, and Ruskovich. Resolution authorizing the county executive to negotiate a contract with FH, FSH Holding LLC for the sale of certain county property known as the Grand Street Properties located within the city of Newburgh.
Vero, second.
Discussion? Okay, roll, roll call.
Benelli?
Mr. Chairman, I have my hand up.
Okay, I didn't see it. Okay, go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions before we vote on this. One, has the issue of this group not being able to flip the property been addressed? And then the second part of my question is, if we pass this resolution, does the final contract come back to this legislative body for our approval? Or is it now we are giving the authorization to the county executive to approve it and giving up our vote as the legislature?
To my knowledge, it comes back to us, but if somebody wants to correct me on that, this, on this one, it comes back to us, right, Antoinette?
Yes, and as far as flipping the property, Ms. Tautel, that is a term and condition that the legislature requires in the, in the contract, and that has been made very clear to our negotiating team, Mr. Poor and the county attorney's office. So they have made assurances that that will be part of the contract as well.
And then the contract will come back to us for our final vote before it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Minority Leader Paduk has his hand up, and then legislator Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, I've expressed I have concerns regarding this proposal, which I've expressed many times. First, I think the proposed project by FSH Holding is a great project as presented. However, the initial price of one million for three properties is crazy, out of line, I think. We paid with taxpayers' money three point two five million dollars for, for these buildings, actually to, to complement the college campus educational opportunity. As we all know, that fizzled out, and now we are looking to sell them at a huge loss when the last assessment, as per our real property director, was four million dollars. I am not okay with that and have made up, made a few suggestions on how to recruit more of our taxpayers' money while still supporting this great project for Newburgh. Mr. Poor has said he will look to negotiate regarding my concerns, as well as others, regarding this low sale price. I will give the benefit of the doubt on that. This project, when completed, will generate millions of dollars in revenue for the county and sit while providing, providing that it comes to fruition. One concern that needs to be addressed is the contract that states that these properties, which you've just said, can't be fixed. So if that's going to be in the contract for sure, and Mr. Go, Mr. Poor can negotiate it up a little higher, hopefully, I'll support it, providing that they can do what they say they can do, and it'll be a great project for Newburgh. Just wanted to make my points about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, legislator Luhan, then legislator Menuda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm really happy to hear again, once again, that that's, that that's what Council Reed said about making sure they would go back to the county. That stipulation is very, very important. I know other legislators had concerns about that. I myself share that concern about them being able to flip the project afterwards. And, and so that, that's definitely something that, that's, that is very important. I will say this, and I've said this from the very top, from the very beginning of this project. When we talk about game changers in Orange County, when we talk about game changes for the city of Newburgh, it is very rare to see a project that creates this much excitement. Talking to community members, talking to, to city staff, talking to city officials, the excitement that is, that they see around this project is overwhelming. And it's, and it's just wonderful to see because it really connects to so many aspects of, of Newburgh. Right now, we're seeing, we're seeing houses that are being built up, not just on Liberty Street and renovated in those areas, but on Chambersian, Johnson Street, communities and areas that have traditionally been underserved and didn't get the attention that we would like them to do. We're also seeing a booming Liberty Street, and an economy that's been, that's been growing for the last three years. More and more people are coming to the Washington headquarters to come to the tower. Some more people are coming for these, for restaurants, for, for a top-notch cuisine. They're not just going to the riverfront anymore. They're coming through the largest historic district, and that's exactly what this is going to do. It's going to bring people, it's going to continue to bring people to the city of Newburgh. It's going to continue to bring people to Orange County. It's going to let people to know not only about our beautiful rural areas, but our beautiful urban districts. This is a project I'm extremely excited about and happy to see that they show the foresight to work with the college and, and to continue not only the, what, what the college was trying to do with workforce development, but also trying to bring back the, the beautiful history of the city of Newburgh and of Orange County. I, I really want to encourage all my colleagues to support this project. I, I'm really excited about this project. I believe it's a real, real game changer for the city of Newburgh. And, and all the community members are going to be able to, to also be able to create jobs and create, and create opportunities for more businesses in this area. It's just, the taxes alone is going to be, is, is a long-term impact that is going to benefit every single person, every single district in Orange County. And so when we talk about that price tag, I, I understand minority concerns about that price tag, but we also have to consider the amount of money that they're going to be putting into these buildings, buildings that are, that are, that are rapidly declining in terms of, you know, they're, in terms of, you know, their capabilities. We want to make sure that these buildings are bringing, you know, they, bring our economy back and bringing jobs and bringing tourism. And so this project's going to do that, extremely excited about it. And again, I hope that the, my colleagues will support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Legislator Kulusek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a heads up, I spoke with the city manager in Newburgh recently, and he was at the table when they reviewed the RFPs before decisions were made. And of course, he's on board with the foster group here. And his indication to me was that they are in it for the long haul. They don't plan, and all of those other properties that he has developed, they've kept them also. So he's in it for the long haul, no plans at all, not even a thought of flipping this in the near future or any time in the future. So just wanted to put that out there, the information that was, came from the city manager's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands up, Kelly?
Yes, there's legislator Menuda.
Okay, go ahead, legislator Menuda.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to address some of the items I heard.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanna address some of the items I heard. This is not a low-priced sale. This is the highest bid price. Everything in real estate is negotiable. Holding onto this building is only gonna cause exponential deterioration, and we are entering the winter months. The sooner we can ratify this deal, the sooner the building can be secured and be properly put into place to make repairs to it so it stops decaying. It is an albatross for us as a government because of its condition, and it, this is your typical situation of Economics One-O-One. Any investment from the government usually reaps tenfold investment. We are looking at potentially two million, two and a half million dollars less than we had paid for the building. However, that's two and a half million dollars, which is technically an investment, or can be seen as an investment, into the city of Newburgh from a government entity. And as we've already seen from what they're proposing, twenty-three million dollars is going to be invested. We've already seen the brief, the benefits of this, and I would encourage every single one of the, my constituents and the legislature to vote positively for this sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislature Menuda. Is that it, Kelly? I'm, I'm just gonna-
I don't see any other hands.
I have to concur with Legislators Menuda, Coolsec, and Luhan. Um, you know, three point two million, good luck with that. We're not gonna get it. Um, if, if Harry and, and the team can negotiate up a little bit more, um, that's, that's great. But seldom do we have something with this much bipartisan support in the city of Newburgh. You know, and they're working with the sc- with the college at, at possible opportunities there. We have an opportunity here, um, to get a, a piece of property and help, uh, revitalize the city of Newburgh, which needs it more than any city around, as we all know. And let's not miss that opportunity. I mean, the, the buildings are deteriorated. I, I've, I've toured the buildings three times. We're not gonna get much more bang for our buck than this. The, the buildings are gonna be back on the tax rolls, and they're gonna, and they're gonna thrive. And, and Kearney, the second developer who bid on it for a residential component, um, they did, uh, great work on Liberty Street, as, as Legislature Luhan said, and, and they can do more of that. And, and even if we have taxed properties, uh, that come to tax sale, uh, maybe we can work through Eric Rusher and, and create opportunities there for, for residential development. You know, I'm very impressed with what was done in Beacon. I mean, they did a beautiful job over there with, with mixed income levels, uh, absolutely beautiful. I go by it all the time. And that can be done in the city of Newburgh as well. But let's not miss the boat on this. It's gonna come back to us. Um, we're not gonna get much more money, so let's not waste time doing that. Because the more we spin wheels, the more time, uh, the more money it costs the county of Orange. I've seen it with the jail, with all the equivocation for ten years before we put the shovel in the ground. I've seen it in so many other areas, Camp LaGuardia. We're gonna lose money there when we eventually sell, no doubt about it. So let's not miss the opportunity. We can't harp over a few dollars that we might get, and I firmly believe we're not gonna get. Roll call.
Benelli? Aye. Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagastakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Pulasek? Luhan? Menuda?
Yes.
Ryskevich?
Yes, yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra? Taganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Tautel?
Tui? Vero? Prescha?
Yes.
Twenty-one ayes.
Absolutely. Okay. Uh, number eight, which is also a voice vote, I know, which is a voice vote, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jean.
Legislators Paduk and Coolsec, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation to execute the Heritage Trail work agreement between the New York State Department of Transportation and the county of Orange.
Vero, second.
Discussion?
Legislature Fagion has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Legislature Fagion.
Thank you, Chairman, and to my colleagues getting set to vote today, just as a reminder, the Heritage Trail is now extending into Middletown. But as I say every time we talk about the Heritage Trail, Orange County does not end in Middletown. There's a great western part of Orange County the Heritage Trail does not go into, and even if we're not excited about it coming into western Orange County, we have lots of great trail opportunities in western Orange County, and I'll be coming to this legislature in the next twelve months with a couple of great ideas to revitalize the D and H Canal Park and other parts of western Orange County for some great hiking and mountain biking experiences that will cost way, way, way less than the Heritage Trail. I'm gonna support this today, and I look forward to my colleagues supporting me in the future. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Legislature Fagion. I look forward to you bringing those ideas. You and I toured that property at Never Sink to the D and H Canal, and, uh, there are inexpensive opportunities there, and I look forward to your ideas. Thank you. Uh, roll call if there's nobody else.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Joe. I recognize the voice.
Can you add me to this resolution, please?
I, I certainly can. Okay. Uh, nobody else's hands are up, correct, Kelly?
No, I don't see anybody else.
Okay, uh, this is, lost my place here. This is a voice vote. No, this is a roll call.
Got it, supposed voice vote.
Voice vote, okay, I checked off eight, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, roll call. I mean, no, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Okay, now we're on number nine, right?
Yes.
Jumping around here, okay. Uh, this is a roll call, so go ahead, Jean.
Legislators Benelli and Benton, resolution of the Orange County Legislature, assuming lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA, with respect to the sale by the county of a portion of lands off Quarry Road in the town of Goshen, New York, classifying the action as Type One and determining that the action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Vero, second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, um, Legislature Coolsec?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a no vote on this because I can't, nobody can guarantee me that some of the lands near the, uh, caves, and actually some of the lands that we're selling, may not have other artifacts and other items of, of historical value than them, so. So I'm a no vote on this, and, uh, I, I think that there should be some sort of archaeological exploration in the lands that we, you intend to sell or are up for sale. So I'm definitely a no vote on this.
We're talking about the SECA now, though, correct?
Okay.
You, you have a problem with us assuming lead agency on SECA? That's, that's what we're discussing right now.
No, no, I don't, sorry, sir.
No problem, no worries. Okay, Minority Leader Paduk, we're talking about SECA.
Yes, SECA, it also says there will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. I can't support this resolution. We haven't done any studies to ensure that. SECA's gonna take care of it. We'll see how that goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, um, all right.
Legislature Tautel?
Yes, Legislature Tautel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. I don't believe that this is a property that we should be taking any chances with. It needs to be protected. We are the keepers of that property, and I believe that it is something that should be put within our Parks Department or within the State Park Department for land management and preservation. So I will be a no vote on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions?
Legislature Menuda.
Okay, go ahead, Legislature Menuda.
Excuse me, I just wanna clarify. This is for SECA, this is for the sale, so it has nothing to do with anything else. The, the fact of the matter is, we own the property, it's for sale. Whoever the buyer is, they're gonna have to deal with the archaeological artifact, based on studies and all of the other things. It's not ours to do. It is up to the buyer to do. This is simply for the sale of the property. Please confirm that?
Right, it's for the, well, it's the SECA for the sale, so it's the, the negative impacts are just, you know, for the sale, all the other things.
Of the sale.
I, I believe what you said is correct.
Very much. Thank you very much.
It's for the real estate transaction.
Right, that's what we're talking about here, so. Okay, anybody else, Kelly?
Uh, Lori has her hand back up.
Lori, did you raise it back up?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I raised it back up because I wanna just clarify that I am completely against the sale of this property, so I don't feel we should do the SECA review. I think this property should stay within our hands and be transferred over to the hands of the state for parks. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, let's go with roll call.
Benelli? Aye. Paduk?
No. No.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagastakis?
No.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Porseth?
No.
Luhan?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
No.
Taganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tautel?
No.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Prescha?
Yes.
Fourteen ayes, seven noes. Motion passes.
Okay, number ten, which will be two-thirds, will be roll call.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's an echo. I don't know where, where that's coming from. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Chairman.
Might have been Peter. I just saw him.
Got him.
Okay, number ten.
Legislators Benelli, Vero, Benton, resolution authorizing the sale of the Quarry property in the town of Goshen, approximately thirty-one acres consisting of a portion of Section Twenty, Block One, Lot Ten Point Two-One, for not less than one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and authorizing the execution of documents relating to the same.
Okay. Is there a second? Tom Bureau, can he second it? He's muted.
Uh, second, Ryskevich, sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. Okay, Legislature Cheney?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, as we move forward with considering the sale of the property adjacent to Lookout Mountain Prehistoric Caves, it is time to honor our longstanding commitment to preserving and managing the property. As a start in this resolution, the legislature will set aside one hundred thousand dollars to begin this work. This month, I will bring a resolution to committees to create the Duchess Quarry Site's National Registered District Management Committee. This is something that has been a stated goal as we've moved through this process for as long as I've been a legislature, legislator, and it goes further back to the two thousand twelve plan. As I envision this committee, which will be the subject of discussion and modification during committee deliberations, it would be responsible for guiding the efforts to stabilize, protect, and secure the caves and other historic areas of the county properties surrounding the caves, and create a public education and interaction plan for this important historic resource. The committee would continue its mission by providing oversight to the implementation of the plans and subsequent improvements to and activities at the property. As I see it, the committee would be comprised of interested residents of the county, as at-large members, representatives of the Orange County chapter of the New York State Archaeological Society, members of this county legislature, and representatives of the executive branch of county government, likely to include the county historian and the commissioner of parks. I hope this, uh, resolution, when I bring it, uh, in the next week, we'll see the full re, we'll receive the full support of the legislature, um, and when it is hopefully voted on at the December seventeenth session. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Minority Leader Paduk? You're muted, Mike. You're muted, Mike.
You got me that time. Listen, I wanna once again, uh, voice my concerns regarding the sale of the Duchess Quarry caves. As I've said before, this resolution gives up our authority as the legislature to review or address additional protections or concerns we might have regarding the contract of sale. Today, we will be allowing the executive branch to determine how the contract of sale reads on the property. We have, we control, that we control for our taxpayers, the most signi- and the most significant artifacts in this county without our approval. We have the responsibility to pres- preserve this national, national register site for perpetuity and need to preserve the educational opportunities of these prehistoric caves. We won't have the ability to ensure a study be done to better understand what additional blasting impacts will have on the caves, and we have a responsibility as legislators to ensure that we, as the overseers of this property, examine all impacts this sale could have on our little piece of history. We're giving it to the county executive. We can't add any protections. We can't do nothing. So if you wanna do that, be my guest. I can't support this, and none of you should support it either. Thank you.
Okay, Legislature Tui?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I just wanted to say that I think that we are, uh, preserving it in a certain way, and that I'd like to see, uh, our partner, partnerships with the federal and state, uh, government to help preserve the, this land. I'd also like to see this governing body increase the amount of money. We're, we're putting towards a hundred thousand now. I think that, uh, it would be bringing more, we, we need to bring more money. We need to preserve it as educational, and also, as I agree with all of my legislators, that this is a treasure, a true gem in Orange County. And, um, I just think that, uh, whatever we can do, uh, going forward to bring those educational opportunities and possibly, uh, some, uh, tours and things like that, but, uh, we certainly need federal and state help to do it, and, and I, and I also see us as a legislature also continuing to bring some more funds to the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Legislature Heinz, then Legislature Menuda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I know, I applaud, uh, Legislature Cheney not only for his work on this new committee he wants to form, which I wholeheartedly support, but also on, uh, forcing us to get more money. Originally, we were told the property was only worth five hundred thousand. Now we're doing a minimum of one point two seven five million dollars. So, uh, I think the, uh, as the value of that property, that Barry, uh, forced the, the, to get a better estimate of the property, uh, that money should be put aside. I agree with Legislature Tui and Legislature Tautel that it should be, uh, turned into parkland, whether it be owned by the county or the state, fine with me. I know Barry talked about looking for private donations as well. In committee, Barry proposed two hundred thousand, and, and I supported him on that, and we, we lost that motion unfortunately. Uh, but I, I think most legislators said they would commit to future monies, uh, as necessary as the project is developed as to where we're going. Uh, we've enhanced the buffer, uh, so I think that, uh, we're not selling the caves, by the way. I heard someone say we're selling the caves. We're not selling the caves. We're selling the land next to, uh, near the caves, and we put a significant buffer in. So, uh, I think that this money that we put into it, if the land is sold, we can fence off the property, get experts to make sure that it's stable, and, uh, only let people in the property if we're gonna own it, uh, once we know it's safe. And even then, they should be going in and guided tours and things of that nature. I don't think people should be wandering around there. I know Mr. Fagion has, uh, vented out there recently and said it's overgrown and, uh, it's a rough, rough land to hike. Uh, so I think, uh, with Barry's plan in place and us transferring it to parks, having our, uh, county historian involved is, is a step in the right direction. And, uh, the additional buffer that we've added since we talked about that in the future should protect, uh, the area for all of our citizens. So I'm supporting it, and I definitely support Barry's project. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Menuda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I echo, uh, uh, Legislature Heinz and Cheney's thoughts on this matter. We are not selling the caves themselves. We've already partitioned that off and given it a buffer area. At the end of the day, if we sell this for one point two million, we make up for some of the money that others are talking about having quote-unquote "lost" for the, uh, Grand Street projects, and at the end of the day, we're also losing liability. We don't need to overreach for government control on this. There are already those agencies there through the state and the federal government. So anybody who's to purchase this property is gonna have to deal with them, which are bigger and higher power. So I'm all for, uh, the sale and doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly, who has other hands up?
Uh, we have Legislature Taganga and Legislature Sierra.
Okay, Legislature Taganga, and then Legislature Sierra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I have to say that, um, I'm, I've done a little research on this, and I'm, I'm not really sure is- and I'm, I'm not really sure as far as if our buffer is extended far enough for anything that we do not know that's there. Um, I, I have a lot of concern about this. Um, so I guess my real question is, if this is passed today and it's negotiated through the county exec, is this also come back before the legislature, before we vote to sell? Or is he totally in charge of selling it, and once we vote on this today, we have no further input?
That's what happens.
Uh, this, once you vote on it today, it's in the hands of the, uh, county executive. And, uh, so this is a little different, this is very different from the, uh, the Grand Street properties in the, in the city of Newburgh. This, uh, that is, we're seeking for proposals for development of the land. This is a straight sale. Whoever gives us the highest bid, uh, not less than one point two seven five, uh, that, there, they will be the purchases of the property. So no discretion in that.
Thank you. So, um, I, I have to tell you then, I really have concerns because if we sell it to the mining company that's there now, and they continue to mine that full thing, um, there's no, there's no guarantee that we'll have any control over whether there's any damage to the mines as they are. Because we all know, I know I have a quarry behind me on Clover Road and, and I'm a mile, good mile away. And every time they have any type of blasting, i- it shakes our house. So I, I have to have, um, I, I really have a lot of concerns that we don't have enough of a buffer. Um, I don't know if it's appropriate to, you know, make an amendment that we increase that buffer so that we don't have that problem. But I know we went from the hundred feet to, um, and I'm not exactly sure what the addition was. If anybody can explain what the addition of the square footage was. I think it was like an acre, but the acre was thin. It wasn't like wide, um, on the map. Um, and I'm just concerned that we could possibly be putting into danger all the artifacts that have not been found because it has not been developed, it has not been done. I agree with putting money aside as Barry, um, legislator Cheney has, has put. But I would really hate to be part of a legislative body that, you know, put us in a way where we've destroyed some history that we really should be, you know, um, embracing rather than looking at, putting it in control of somebody else that will have no say in after we sell. Thank you.
Okay. Legislator Sierra?
I just want to say, I want to, I want to applaud, uh, the comments made by legislator Deganga. And, uh, I have to agree with her. I've been back and forth with this, with this project, and, um, I understand we're in the middle of a pandemic. I understand, and, uh, we're in a budget crisis. Um, and we could use the money. Uh, but throughout this project, I, I know you all received the letter from former legislator Berkman, and he was negotiating the buffer zone. But in, in my opinion, it's, it's not big enough. Uh, for anyone who's been even remotely close to a blasting site, uh, to feel the shockwave, and you're hundreds and hundreds of feet away from a blast. They had to do some blasting here in Middletown when the, uh, when we built our water treatment plant. And even if you're standing a mile away on the earth, you could feel the shockwave take your breath away. I could only imagine what it's doing underground in solid bedrock. So a million dollars, or one point two million dollars, whatever it is, in an eight-hundred-million-dollar budget is literally a drop in the bucket to me. Um, I feel like we can find the money in other places. Uh, we can tighten the belt elsewhere. But even if there's a one percent chance that we can ruin these caves that are, you know, in my opinion, priceless, I understand we're not selling the caves, and we're sell- selling a property next to the caves. But as I stated, there's no con- when you're, when you're dealing with explosives, there's no controlling what's going to happen to the earth, or what's going to happen to the shockwave, or what, uh, vote line you're going to hit, or a vein of such that you, you know. So in my opinion, it's not worth taking the risk of ruining these caves for a measly one point two million dollars in an annually eight-hundred-million-dollar budget. So I'm, I'm voting against this. I'm in total favor of, of legislator Cheney's, uh, committee that he wants to form. And, um, again, I, I can't, I can't support selling this, this property for a measly one point two million dollars and risk the chance of ruining these caves, which, in my opinion, I, I feel like we should make it a tourist attraction. We have Legoland coming. There's other, um, you know, I, I supported the, uh, the tourism director, the tourism position. Um, we are, hopefully after this pandemic, you know, we'll, we'll have Legoland. We're looking to push tourism, um, in this county. And I think this is just one more component that'll add to our tourism. And I think, uh, I think we can, we can come up with better innovative ways, maybe, uh, take that property. And even if we protected it by using it for, uh, you know, whether it's parking, or, or making a museum, or putting something adjacent to that property to benefit those caves and even create some revenue later on. Um, I think we'll see the one point two million dollars better utilized faster, and, uh, the longevity of the revenue, if we made that a tourist attraction, uh, will better suit us for years to come. So I can't support this resolution at this time. Thank you.
Okay, legislator Cheney?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to address some of the comments that have been made.
Please.
First off, um, the Historic District was created many years ago. When that was done, it was said that you needed thirteen point two acres. That was to be protective of the caves. It was, you know, to give it the, the protection that it needed. Uh, we have since added another, uh, more than three acres, almost three and a half, probably three and a half, almost four acres of land. We've extended it to sixteen point three seven acres that we are keeping, that we will have total control over. As far as the blasting goes, that's something that is regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation. They know the caves are there. They have, they hold the permits for, or, or they issue the permits for this property. And, um, to a degree, we need to, uh, rely on them. And we have the opportunity, when permits come be- before the DEC, to be, uh, a responsible party in, um, deciding what gets done. Uh, the other thing I'll, I'll mention is that part of the property we're selling is a big hole in the ground right now. It's already been quarried. Um, from the, i- if you, if you look at the map we received, the quarrying operation is already closer to the caves than it will be when we sell the property. In other words, the, the property that they're buying won't be any closer to the caves than quarrying operations already are now. So I just wanted to make, uh, those few points to clarify some of what's been said. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. That's very important. Okay, legislator Menuda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank legislator Cheney for bringing such accurate information to this. I often find that when, you know, individuals are operating out of their area of expertise, sometimes nothing is done. I've been on blasting sites. I'm not a geologist. I'm not an ordinance expert. However, there are those people who are. Should anything happen, that is on those individuals. The liability and responsibility goes to them. By keeping this property, we have our own liabilities, which go right to the taxpayer. God forbid something to go wrong. By removing these areas and selling them, we put that liability on the other party. We still retain the caves, and that other party has a responsibility to preserve and maintain and operate in accordance with their standards. So to some of the comments that have been stated today, I think we need to rely on the experts that do what they do so that we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Menuda. Legislator Vero, I'm sure you're going to talk about the liability aspect, as you have done, and I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how many of my fellow legislators have actually made the trip to the caves. I've done it twice, uh, once from the bottom going up and once from the top going down. It's not an easy access at all. Uh, I mean, it's been suggested we can make this a tourist attraction. People visit them. If we own a property, that's going to be a very difficult climb for most people. Uh, you know, at some points, you're up on the rocks. Sometimes points, you're, uh, scaling down with a rope because you can't go down without holding on to a rope. Myrna and I know there's a lot of bees in this there, too. It's kind of dangerous. So the yellow jacket's got both of us at that point. But, uh, I think we're concerned about preserving the, the value of the caves. And I was listening to one of the experts on the radio, WTBQ, the other day, and he says, uh, the same thing. I'm really concerned about preserving caves, but anything historical or significant has been looted out of those caves decades ago. Currently, s- some of that stuff that we're trying to protect is not there. It sits in museums or in the hands of private collectors at this point. As far as the liability goes, I was sitting at home watching, uh, Channel Twelve News one night, and they had a segment on town of Ramapo, who ended up inheriting the, uh, Tilcon Quarry down in town of Ramapo. One of their biggest nightmares ever. They've had to fence it. They spend hundreds of thousands of dollars doing that. Policing it, attractive nuisance. The pumps turned off. The water came up. Kids are in there with dirt bikes, regular bikes. Uh, it's an attractive nuisance. It's constantly being patrolled. And if anything, I'd like to not have that responsibility. I think we all want to preserve the caves. We did extend the buffer. Uh, that was our intent to do that. But, uh, I think it's going to be hard to make it a tourist attraction just because of the difficult access to the caves. But I will be voting in favor today to, uh, I'll be a yes on this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's say, uh, is there any other legislators? I see.
No, I think Joe, uh, Joe, you left your hand up. I think everybody, we're clear.
Okay. Okay, I, if I'm the final speaker, I'd just like to say that, uh, you know, we are going to preserve the caves, and we're going, we want to sell the mine. I mean, the mining operation. It's, it's a huge liability for the county. Um, I was out there and got stung by a bee twenty-six years ago, John Vero, with, uh, Jeff Berkman before he was a legislator, and Alan Sibon. So that being said, you know, it's a huge, Emshe, uh, Emshe and Khan, you name it. There's so much regulation, a secret process they have to go through. Uh, it's, it's unbelievable. And, and it is, it is jolting when you get, uh, you know, I worked at, at a quarry for five and a half years. I, I know it's, it's jolting. But those caves are more protected, they will be more protected with a sale than they are today. Um, we, we had a buffer. We added a buffer in there, as Barry said, and we extended the buffer. And then we, we, uh, voted for the, the hundred thousand dollars, and, and there'll probably be more down the road to, uh, preserve the history of those caves. But encouraging exploration of those caves, even with a tour, tour guide, is not necessarily a good idea. Uh, I know at the, at Duchess Quarry, they had a bad accident. They used to allow, uh, quad riders and sportsmen to, to ride quad two there on the weekend, and, and they had a bad accident there within the last year. So it's, it's, it's very, it's very much a liability in that regard as well. But we've done everything. We, we want to, certainly want to protect the history there, and, and we've done that. And we're here at the midnight hour, and I just hope, I mean, two years, uh, a year ago, excuse me, a year ago August, and I remember it because it's when Senator Bill Lark, um, passed away. We had this discussion, and I know Kathy Deganga and Joe Menuda had some concerns, and they were incorporated into the resolution. They had, they had quite a few concerns at that time. And I think this has all been addressed. I really do. I mean, it's time to sell and get this liability out of the county's hands. And by, as a taxpayer, I mean, that's, that should be, the county tax rate. We have, all of us are concerned about the county tax rate, especially with the pandemic. And we need to get rid of these surplus pro- properties. The caves are not leaving us. They're still going to be there. They're still going to be preserved, more so than ever. So I encourage everyone to, to vote for this resolution, resolution. Uh, roll call.
Benelli? Aye. Pidug?
No.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis?
No.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulisek?
No.
Luhan?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
No.
Deganga?
Oh, yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tautel?
No.
Tui?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, sorry. I'm sorry. Who was that?
Sutherland, I think.
I'm sorry, Sutherland was yes. I hit the wrong button. Okay.
Tui, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Vero?
Yes.
Rasha?
Yes.
Fourteen ayes, seven noes. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, number eleven, roll call.
Legislators Kulisek, Vero, Benton, and Menuda. An act authorized the county executive in conjunction with the Division of Risk Management to enter into an agreement with the Workers' Compensation Board's Waiver Agreement Management Office for the settlement of the county's rights to reimburse from the special fund for sec- second inju- injuries.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli? Benelli? I'm sorry, yes. Pidug?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Deganga? Sutherland? Tautel? Tui? Vero? Rasha. Twenty-one ayes.
Okay, number twelve, bond resolution requiring a supermajority?
Legislators, legislators Kulisek, Benelli, Benton, and Anagnostakis. Bond resolution dated December third, twenty twenty. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing the improvement of, of intersections, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is two hundred and fifty thousand. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand public county finance set appropriation.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion?
Legislator Tautel.
Okay, go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just have one question. The bond resolution, it just simply says intersections, and I don't see anywhere in the bo- somebody does have a radio or TV on in the background. Um, I don't see anywhere in the resolution the listing of the intersection. Is that something, or intersections, excuse me? Is that something that should be listed there?
Uh, Laurie, generally speaking, uh, it's for, uh, they have some projects in mind. Uh, but if something else, uh, comes about that needs to be addressed immediately for public safety reasons, then the money gets readjusted. So this is an annual appropriation and bonding that we do on behalf of DPW. So sometimes they do have projects, uh, in mind, but, uh, i- i- it's there as a placeholder. Uh, they do use the money every year, uh, but if something else comes up, you know, comes to their attention that needs to be addressed immediately, the monies and funds are used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wasn't sure if it was supposed to be there or not.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't see any, Steve.
Okay, roll call.
Benelli? Benelli? Benelli?
You with us, Katie?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Pidug?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Deganga? Sutherland? Tautel? Tui? Vero? Rasha. Twenty-one ayes.
Okay, number thirteen. Voice vote.
Legislators Benelli and Kulisek. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature, giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act SECRE with respect to the Cornwall Bridge replacement in the town of Cornwall, and making a preliminary determination that this project be classified as an unlisted action.
Vero, second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, number 14?
Legislators Kulisek, Cheney, Benton, and Heinz. Bond resolution dated December 3rd, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specifications and estimates necessary for the replacement of the county-owned Cornwall Bridge in the town of Cornwall, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $100,000. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 to the county to pay the cost thereof.
Vero, second.
Okay, two thirds, uh, required questions? Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 15?
Legislators Kulisek, Cheney, Benton, and Heinz. Amending bond resolution dated December 3rd, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, amending the bond resolution adopted December 6th, 2018, in relation to financing the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specifications and estimates necessary for the replacement of Main Street Bridge Number 2 in the town of Cornwall, at the total estimated cost of $200,000.
Vero, second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli? Yes. Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 16?
Legislators Kulisek, sorry, legislators Kulisek and Benton. Bond resolution dated December 3rd, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the rehabilitation of the county-owned Powder Mill Bridge in the town of Newburgh, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $385,000. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $385,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Vero, second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli? Yes. Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 17?
Legislators Kulisek and Cheney. Resolution authorizing the county executive to accept a proposed right-of-way dedication parcel in the town of Goshen.
Vero, second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli? Yes. Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 18? Voice vote.
Legislators Riskevich and Kulisek. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature, giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, with respect to the McVeigh Bridge replacement in the town of Wayweyanda, and making a preliminary determination that this project be classified as an unlisted action.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Number 19, two thirds, super majority again. Bond.
Legislators Riskevich, Menuda, Benton, and Sutherland. Bond resolution dated December 3rd, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specifications and estimates necessary for the replacement of the county-owned McVeigh Bridge in the town of Wayweyanda, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $100,000. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to pay the cost thereof.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 20? Another bond? Two thirds.
Legislators Benton, Benelli, Kulisek. Bond resolution dated December 3rd, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the installation of a high-efficiency magnetic bearing chiller at the George Shepherd Building at Orange County Community College, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $425,000. Appropriating said amount therefore, including $212,500 to be received from the state of New York, and authorizing the issuance of $212,500 bonds of the county to pay the balance of the cost thereof.
Second, Vero.
Second? Okay, um, discussion? And legislator Kulisek and Padu's uh, concerns were, were answered, I think, in committee on this. We're, we're safe to go ahead, right, Mike and Jim?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I still remember when you saved this morning on the jail on that, that concern, the cooling tower. Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, number 21, a voice vote?
Legislators Benton and Padu. Resolution approving the release of the county's interest into a certain detailed parcel, I'm sorry, a detailed parcel, to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, number 22, another voice vote?
Legislators Benton and Padu. Resolution authorizing the private sale and conveyance of certain county-owned lands acquired by reason of a failure to redeem said lands from a tax sale to Orange County pursuant to Section 10184 of Real Property Tax Law and Orange County amended local law number 6 of 2010.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Carry. Number 23?
Legislators Benton and Sutherland. Resolution reaffirming the Orange County Department of General Services procurement policy.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Padu?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, or 24, I'm sorry.
Legislators Benton and Menuda. Resolution authorizing the Department of Finance to reduce previously authorized bond resolutions for various completed capital projects.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Okay, roll call, two thirds?
Benelli?
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnestakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulisek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tortel? Tui? Vero? Gresha. 21 i's.
Okay, 25 through 27 collectively? I guess we just go right to roll call on those, right, Jean?
Uh, that's a voice vote.
All right, we need a second from John Vero?
Second, Vero.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
28 and 29 collectively? Vero, second?
Vero, second.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, can you add my name to both of those?
Yes, we can. Please, the 28 and 29 you're talking about, right?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah.
No prob, no problem. Okay, number 30, voice vote?
Legislators Tortel, DeGanga. Resolution amending Resolution Number 391 of 2019, a resolution pursuant to Local Law Number 9 of 2018, Ethics and Disclosure Law, Section 8, Paragraph A, amending Appendix A, list of positions of certain county officers and local political officials required to file a financial disclosure form by deleting the current list and adopting an amended list in its place.
Second, Vero.
Okay, legislator Fagion has his hand up, I see.
Chairman Gresha, please add my name, thank you, sir.
Yes, we can do that. Okay, any other questions? Concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
The last one was aye, okay, opposed? No opposed? Okay, 31? Uh, it was carry. 31, I'm sorry.
Legislators DeGanga, Riskevich, Tui, and Tortel. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to add a stipulation to one public health near position pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Lori Tortel?
Thank you, just a quick question. I emailed in the resolutions and such that I want to be added to, is that still the appropriate, are we going back to doing it uh, during session?
No, that's appropriate, um, Lori, I just had not looked at my emails because I'm in the meeting, I can certainly add them on, yes, it goes.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I was still doing it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Fagion was added to 30 as well, right? Okay. All right, um, all in favor of 31?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number 32?
Legislator Benton. Resolution finally adopting the proposed budget of Orange County for the year 2021 pursuant to section three six zero of the county law and section four point zero seven of the Orange County Charter and section four dash twelve of the Administrative Code.
Vero, second.
Okay. Discussion?
Legislator, Minority Leader Paduk?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank our Budget Director and her staff for the outstanding job they have done, not only by working with me, but as we put together the budget for 2021. With all that's going on in the world regarding job loss, sales tax revenue loss, lives lost, business closing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, during the pandemic, we are in a position to lower our tax rate, stay under the two percent tax cap, and still provide the needed services to our taxpayers. We are able to accomplish this feat by reducing our overestimated expenses in regards to contractual services, reducing capital expenditures, and by significantly reducing our vacant but funded positions by eighty percent, totaling fifteen million dollars in reduction to county taxation for 2021. By not filling vacant but funded positions in the 2020 budget, we have saved seventeen point six million dollars, which will be used to offset our loss in revenue due to the pandemic, and reduce our fund balance, which totaled fifty-four million at the beginning of this year. Currently, there are two hundred and eighty-six positions in the 2021 budget. However, by not allowing, by allowing only fifty-seven of them to be funded, we are reducing the tax burden by another fifteen million dollars on our taxpayers. For the last fifteen years, I have been advocating and proposing reductions to these vacant but funded positions to a reasonable amount to stop the overtaxation of our taxpayers. I have never gotten the support from any of my Republican or Independence Party colleagues, but I want to express how proud I am to support a budget that incorporates all of my proposals, reduces the tax burden on our residents while addressing the overestimated expenses while still providing all the necessary services required in Orange County. This has been a goal of mine for many, many years, and to all my legislative colleagues, I want to thank you all for realizing and supporting what fiscal responsibility can do to protect our taxpayers. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay. Roll call, sorry.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's.
Okay, thirty-three, roll call.
Legislator Benton. Resolution making appropriations for the conduct of the government of Orange County, Orange County Social Services District, Orange County Sewer District Number One, the Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Promline Creek and the Beaver Dam Lake District for the fiscal year 2021 pursuant to sections three five six and three six zero of the county law and sections four dash eight and four dash nine B of the Orange County Administrative Code.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's.
Okay, number thirty-four, the roll call.
Legislator Benton. Resolution providing for the raising of taxes required by the Orange County budget for general government purposes, social services district purposes, Orange County Sewer District Number One purposes, Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Promline Creek purposes, and Beaver Dam Lake District purposes, and levying taxes pursuant to section three six zero of the county law, section nine zero zero of the real property tax law, and section four point zero eight of the Orange County Charter and Administrative Code.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's.
Okay, number thirty-five, roll call.
Legislator Benton. Resolution adopting the 2021 capital program as amended pursuant to the Orange County Charter, section four point zero seven.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's.
Okay, we are on number thirty-six, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thirty-six is a roll call. Go ahead.
Legislator Benton. Resolution making appropriation to Cornell Cooperative Extension Association of Orange County pursuant to subdivision eight of section two two four of the county law.
Second, Vero.
Second, Vero. Paul, do you want to be, you have your hand up, you probably want to be added, I would guess, right?
Yes, I do, Chairman, thank you.
I didn't want to be presumptuous, but I figured that, synonymous, right? Okay, legislator Kulusek.
I would just like to be added also.
Not a problem. And who else has their hand up? Anybody else?
No one else.
Okay.
Sorry, I spoke too soon. Legislator Cheney and Sutherland.
Sure, okay, Barry, you want to be added?
Yep. If I could, yes, please.
Janet, you want to be added?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's.
Okay, the last, thirty-seven through sixty-four. Now, Vero, you want to second that?
I will second collectively.
Okay. I guess we will take, that's roll call, right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Fagion, Heinz, Kulusek, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ruskovich, Sassy, Sierra, Deganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Vero, Breschah, twenty-one I's, Mr. Chairman, and the desk is clear.
Okay, well, everyone have a, I see a couple of hands up. Everyone have a great weekend, and I guess that's it. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Jim, go ahead.
Jim Kulusek, I would just like to wish all of our Jewish constituents out there a happy Hanukkah. We won't meet again as a group, and Hanukkah's starting on the eleventh, so happy, happy Hanukkah, all of you.
Yes, for sure. We should get that, what happened to that menorah that we had over at fifteen Mathews Street? Do we still have that? Gene?
We have it, and if you'd like to come and help us decorate, but we really don't want you here.
You don't.
We are decorating tomorrow, and the menorah will come up.
That'll be one of your last items of business.
I don't blame you.
Please send pictures.
We will send pictures, yes, we will.
Sign you to that duty, but thank you. Happy Hanukkah, too.
Well, I thank you, my children, appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. All right, do we, all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
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 So long, everybody.
All righty, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Stay safe, everyone.
Have a good evening, stay safe.
Bye now.